Why don't we go ahead and call our meeting to order, please? If we could stand for a moment of silence and then ask Ms. Sames to leave some comments to the floor.
Sure.
It would have been David's turn. I think his absence would be a little...
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hollerow.
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Mrs. Butcher Conway.
Here.
Mrs. Singer Oedley.
Here.
Mr. Lesby.
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sames.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you all. David is still out of town, but knew that he would not be present tonight. Let's see. We have approval of the minutes. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting. If you'd like to look for those over for any corrections.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second there.
And what's been made and seconded, and if there are no corrections, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also in your packet, you have found a check register. If everybody could indicate they've received their check register. And under the section for public comments, we have no one signed up. Would you like to make public comments tonight?
I don't have anything for me.
We're delighted that you're here. Thank you for being with us. If there are no other, if there are no further mayor comments...
I guarantee there'll be some comments made.
There'll be some comments. There will be comments. I actually have a pretty good list, Marv, and I thought I would...
That's all right.
I thought I'd fill in the gap as much as I could. Under mayor's comments, just a handful of things that we've touched on recently that I want to update the council on. As you know, we have received the bids on the 911 radio system, and we immediately sent all of those bid packets and the electronic versions of those bid packets to our consultants, TUSA. And they will begin the technical evaluation. I understand they have a 200-page rubric that they grade these with to see if they meet technical muster before we even open the prices.
Wow.
Their prices are still sealed, and they will remain sealed until TUSA confirms that all the technical requirements have been met. So it'll be another two or three weeks before we know what that price is. But we think this is the most conservative way to approach that. So they have those, and they're doing their work. Also, just wanted to touch on the issue, the issue that we continue to hear about concerning the lot on Pierce Pike that's had the dirt fill added to it and concerns that some of the neighboring businesses have about that fill. Some of you may have received an email from Mr. Tracy this week containing what is titled to be an engineering report. We have read through that on a preliminary basis, and we want to get more information for the council, and we want to understand the planning and zoning process better. But at some point, we may ask Planning and Zoning to come help us understand the process. I'll reinforce that this is not an issue over which the city council has had authority or has taken a position or has ever taken a vote. This has been purely an issue between the division of water, the permitting agencies, and planning and zoning. So given some of the allegation in this thing titled "an engineering report," we'd like to look into those and have better report back for the council.
Well, there's not a thing we can do and override the...
No, there's not.
You know, that's what we was talking earlier. I mean, they've made that decision. We have no say-so in this, none.
None. It's simply some of those allegations about some of the processes we may want to ask about. I don't think we, I don't think any outcome is going to be changed. I don't think there's any action for this body to take. But since you've received those type of documentation, I feel obligated to you to follow up and learn what we can and report back to you. So if you've received that information, we're evaluating it, and we'll have more to report to you as soon as we can. Let's see. Oh, pleased to report that the subcontractor for our architect that was going to do all of the digital scanning of the building, they worked Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and did all of their scanning work.
Wow.
The technology was amazing to watch. They have these white walls that are filled with sensing equipment, and they'll attach them to posts and attach them to parts of the building and then set up a laser scan that... They said that they would have this building mapped to within an eighth of an inch in any one dimension. So they went through all of the attic and through all of the basement. They've been through every closet. They scanned the entire building so that we can get it digitized, and it'd be interesting to see what that looks like after they're through. I had a chance to speak with a couple of council members, but I'm delighted to report to everyone that on Friday afternoon, we opened the bids for the Phase Two expansion of Blaine's Run Business Park. And we received two very favorable bids. The apparent low bid is from the Allen Company at $5,303,000, which is less than our engineering estimate, which means that we're in a position to move forward with this project. The engineers will, our engineers will review the bids. They could not do it in time for tonight, but we anticipate by our April the 26 meeting, we'll have those bids evaluated and be in a position to ask council to approve the apparent low bid, $5,303,000. Once we've done that, then Judge Jack Connor and I have talked about scheduling a groundbreaking for May, sometime in fairly early May, that we can have a pretty significant city-county joint groundbreaking for that project. Now, on top of that 5.3 million and change, there are tap-on fees, both for the sewer system and Kentucky American, so there's probably a couple of hundred thousand dollars of tap-on fees that will still be added to that total amount. But it's still significantly less than what our engineering estimate was. So really pleased with that outcome. We've also followed up on the grant proposal that we submitted to the Transportation Cabinet for $500,000 of discretionary funds.
How much?
They have received our application. They had hoped to get the Economic Development Cabinet to sign off on our application, given its impact on economic development, before it went to a review panel. The Secretary of the Cabinet was out on spring break, so rather than cost us that extra month for this panel to meet again, our contact in the department went ahead and took the project to the approval panel, subject to the Secretary of Economic Development signing off on it.
Could you tell us the figure one more time?
$500,000.
Thank you.
That's what our application is.
Application.
We're not sure how much we'll receive. They did, the panel recommended it, subject to the secretary's approval, and our application is so strong, that was almost an afterthought. And now it goes across the river to the governor's office, and we hope in two or three weeks we get some good news there. That would be applied to this business park project. I'd reported previously that we got a proposal from Strand Engineering to help us with work on Water Street, but their scope was so large and their price was so large that it was more than we had in mind. They've brought us back a significantly changed scope of work with a significantly reduced price, but I only received them today, and I'm not ready to make a recommendation to you tonight. I'd like for us to review these, and I'll probably send you all out these new scope of services so you can get used to what the new scope is before I ask you to approve that at the next meeting. Just a heads up that our second meeting in May falls on holiday.
All right.
So Chuck first pointed this out to me, and we can, we have a number of options, and we don't have to do it tonight. We can consider our calendar. We can meet early the next morning on a Tuesday. We can wait until June the 4th to meet. You might consider your calendars, and we have time to make this decision, but I think we'll want to move our May 28 meeting.
I think it all depends on how good we're going on our budget, too.
That will probably...
That would be the big thing for me, I would say.
Yeah. So we'll aware of that, and we'll play that out. Several big cleanup projects that I think the council can get involved with if they would like to. This Saturday, April the 14th, from 9:00 to 12:00, there's going to be a Boston-area cleanup, where they're going to not only do cleanup, but...
Cemetery.
It's a cemetery.
It's our cemetery.
It's our cemetery in Boston.
We're going to paint the fence. We're going to rake. We're going to pick up trash, and I think there are going to be some trees planted, and there'll be lots of work. Nine to noon.
Nine to noon. This is actually an outgrowth of the meetings that have been occurring with Boston residents. So if anybody would like to be a part of that, that'll be this Saturday. Also, in terms of cleaning up the community, our Main Street Clean Suite activity this year will be on April the 20th. That's a Friday. We normally do it at noon so that folks on their lunch hour can go out and pick up trash and just make downtown look. It's symbolic, but we also pick up a lot of trash. So that will be at noon on April the 20th. Earth Day is actually on Sunday, April the 22nd, and we may have some activities on that Sunday. It's up to a couple of churches that are talking to us, and if they want to engage their congregations, we'll provide some resources to help them do that. Just so you'll know for the calendar, Saturday, May the 12th is Super Recycling Day, and everybody needs a little bit of time to prepare for Super Recycling Day, to get that paint out of a garage or pesticides out and things that they might like to get rid of. So that'll be on May the 12th. And then, as is printed on the agenda, we have an executive order tonight appointing Charlie Mifflin to the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission. I hope that most of you know Charlie. He's a lifetime Georgetown resident, has been a scouting leader for all his adult life, still participates in the scouting flag burning ceremonies that we have. Charlie was an ideal pick for me because he worked in the construction trades. He sold concrete to builders and developers. He understands those things, but yet he's also a lifetime Georgetown resident who has seen this community grow from what, from the 5,000 people that we grew up with. And I think Charlie, we've talked at length, and I think he'll be a good member of that commission.
Motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Under the city attorney portion of the agenda is something that Andrew has made me aware of, and I know the fiscal court is going through this process because it's been fairly Legislative bodies have an obligation, legislative bodies are supposed to set the salaries for the elected officials that will come in office at the next term. And we're supposed to do that at every election. Case law, over the years, has indicated that when legislative bodies do not take that step prior to an election year, they continue with the older salaries. So it's not as if we haven't been able to function, but technically, we're supposed to approve an ordinance indicating the elected official salaries prior to each election. And what we have for you tonight are three ordinances that can be presented for first reading that would establish the city council salary for the next term of office. You can never change a salary while you're in office, in either direction, but for the next people to hold these offices. There's an ordinance setting the council salary for the next term, and the amount is blank. There's first reading of a mayor salary ordinance, and the salary level is blank. And there's a first reading of a city clerk treasurer salary ordinance, and the salary amount is blank. These are, if there were ever issues that are council decisions, these are council decisions. So we've placed them on the agenda. They do have sponsors, but it would be an appropriate time for council to discuss what numbers you'd like for us to insert into this ordinance prior to first reading. There is no vote tonight regardless of what that discussion is. So with that said, I will just throw the floor open for any conversation that council may have.
I would like to step up and talk about it first and some sponsoring it. It's been brought to my attention, and I have talked to several of the council members about this, is that since I've been on council, this is my 10th year, the only raises we have received have been COLA, but there was a couple of years Karen brought to my attention when she was mayor that we didn't take because of the economy at the time. And when everybody else wasn't getting raises, we didn't feel like we should get raises. So, you know, I'm sorry, my throat. I had Megan send me some information on council pay according to our size, also the mayor and also the clerk. And so, and I had them, I asked them doing separate ordinances, and I was thinking, I think the lowest paid, we're the lowest-paid city. Actually, the next lowest is $14,000 a year, and I think the highest was like $18,000. So I kind of like was throwing out numbers, and in the beginning, I was thinking like $5,000, and then I thought, you know what? If you got a $2,500 raise, $2,500 annual salary raise, then that would be, you know, we would be able to compensate for the two years that we didn't get raises, and it would be something that, for futuristically, you know, attract other people now when they run. Now, I want to say that, you know, we do get our benefits, and I'm grateful for that. We don't get a pension, but I personally, as a council person, I do put a lot of time in, and I do it because I love it, and I don't want the community to know that. So I just wanted to throw out a number, and then that's for council. And I thought for the treasurer, I thought we could probably maybe ask to do the same thing, the $2,500. And then on the mayor's salary, Andrew's explained this to me several times, but there is a max on the mayor's salary. We're not like the county. So I think it was close to like $4,800 or something was the max. So I was trying, I was thinking maybe we could take it maybe almost up to the max, maybe minus $500 or something to get the mayor's salary to that level. So that's where the conversations came from and sponsoring it, and so that's where I'm kind of at, just throw it out there for you guys.
Did the other cities that you looked at at $11,000 or $14,000, do their council members, are they able to get benefits?
No, I did not ask that. I will.
Because that, since most of us do, there are a couple that don't, I think, on council members. That really makes our salary a whole lot more than what it shows on paper. And probably for the two years that the council missed, the difference of what should be, if you're basing it on those two years, probably the difference that should be added is probably around $400, $500.
Right.
Would make up for those two years if you choose to do that. Personally, I'm happy with what we do get based on the fact that we are able to take our benefits if we want to, but...
I had a question. So if we get the $2,500, if that gets voted on, that would raise us to the lowest city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that would still make us low, low, low.
Right.
Compared to everybody else.
Anderson is actually lower, but they're the only one that's lower.
They were like, were they like eight?
Anderson is at a rate at $11,087.
And we're at $11,500 and some change.
Who is, who's the city that you're, the next one above us, who was out?
Just let me pull that up while y'all talk.
Yeah, I've got it right here. Let me just go down through what some of the pays that we were able to find. So Richmond City Commission pays their commissioners $18,403. Owensboro pays $19,422. They're also commissioned. Elizabeth Town pays their council $14,500. Henderson pays their commission $11,087. Frankfurt pays $14,643. Ashland, actually, Ashland's even lower. Ashland pays $7,639. That one, just totally glossed over that one. Covington pays their commission $23,254. Florence pays their council $14,39. Bowling Green pays their commission $15,243. And I'll give you Lexington and Louisville. Lexington pays their council members $32,266, and Louisville pays their council members $47,833.
We're not, we're not even close to the ballpark with them.
No, not at all.
We're probably closest that we're compatible with is actually the Frankfurt or Elizabeth Town, the way this city is arranged, but did you look at what their budgets are? What are the budget, their yearly budgets compared to what our yearly budget? Because I think there's something else you look at is how much money are they putting into their budget? How much money do they spend? So to see if they are, like Elizabeth Town, if ours is on the average of $25 million, are they at the average of $35 billion or $30 million? So if they're way up there, then yeah, they have a bigger budget and stuff to maintain and...
I think another question for me would be, are they at-large or are they districts? Because running as at-large is very different than having a district to where you're accountable to everybody.
Except for Lexington and Louisville, there are no true districted council races.
Oh, really? Not even wards? Really? So they're all...
The closest you get is a ward system, which...
Yeah, the ward, that's what I meant.
Is really a hybrid. Your, the ward system is kind of confusing, but it's not, it is not an at-large race.
It's not.
It's, so you're elected by, you're elected by everybody in the city, but you still...
Represent a certain...
It's the highest vote getter in that district. But you're not truly elected by those alone.
I kind of, I'm just writing and thinking about it, and Connie and I have talked a little bit about it. I agree with Connie because, you know, I put a lot of time into it, and I work on holidays. You know, I had a two-hour meeting with a constituent on Martin Luther King Day. I get calls on vacation, and I know all of us get calls all times of day. We see people in the store, at church. I mean, we're always working. We really don't have a vacation, per se. And a lot of us, you know, I remember when I was running the first time, one of the magistrates said to me, he goes, you know, "People don't realize how much time you spend away from your family and doing other things." And it really is true, you know? And I was going through and just thinking about us as a group, and in my four years of being on the council, half of us have lost a parent, and that is time we will never get back, you know? And I, you know, I did spend a lot going to events and all that, and I would still do it again because I love what I do, but it's, you know, there's a lot of sacrifices you make when you're on council. There's a whole lot. And for me, I know a lot of people do mention the health insurance, and that's all good, but United Healthcare is not covered by my doctor, so I have to pay out of pocket, and I've gone to him for 12 years. So I don't really want to go doctor shopping and get a new doctor, but I think, you know, we just all work really hard, and I remember somebody saying to me, "Oh, well, you know, you just have two or three meetings a week." It's like, two or three meetings a month. And it's like, no, a lot of times it's two or three meetings a week, you know? And we did the comp plan, you know, Connie and David were on that, and a lot of them are during the day that take time away from work, you know? And it's stuff I'm happy to do, but I, when I found out that we were the lowest, lowest-paid and the fastest-growing city in the state, too, you know, we have a lot, a lot on us. We have a whole lot on us, so...
Karen, what was the cities that you were saying, Frankfurt that...
Frankfurt and Elizabeth Town. Elizabeth Town, we've always kind of paralleled a lot with them, although these days, they've really gone up because the military is down there close by, and it's made a change in them. But it used to be we were paralleled with them, but Frankfurt we paralleled, too, because they have so much working that comes into the city, and then that working group like Toyota, then they leave, the state workers come in, and then they leave, so it kind of parallels with. But it's, I'd be interested to see what their budgets are with what we, our budgets are, see if they compare.
And you can compare budgets. Another, since we're just looking for general rules of thumb, population is always helpful.
Yeah.
And it shocks most people to know that we are larger than Frankfurt.
Yeah.
We are within a thousand population of being the size of Richmond. We've outgrown E-Town, and we've outgrown a number of the cities that we compare ourselves to. Just, our reality is different.
Well, I would like to ask if, you know, of course, anybody can step up and say whatever, that maybe we could have the first reading and we could do the $2,500 to bring us up to the low and do some more research and talk about it some more, and we can just see what happens.
Personally, I'd like to have some of the research and then come back and talk about it instead of having the first reading, but gather up the research so that all the council can have the research on it, and including the mayor's position and the clerk. Now, clerk, our clerk is very unique in all ways, but just have that, and then have the first reading next meeting.
I think we have a timeframe, don't we?
Yeah, we do have a time.
Yeah, you could do that. You'd have to have a special call meeting. You must pass it by the first Monday in May.
Yeah, it has to be done.
So that's why I wanted to suggest that we put the numbers in and we can get the information to you this week.
But if you change it, though, next, if you do change it next week, then it's going to have to have a...
You'd have to have another.
Have to have another meeting one way or the other.
Well, my position on this, me and Connie talked about this a few weeks ago, and I just were straight up, that I felt like city council was a part-time position. At least personally, I do it more as a service back to the community than it is for the pay. So I would not support any type of an increase. Cost of living increase to me is fine. When it comes to the city clerk, I believe that there was just a huge adjustment made for the city clerk position two or three years ago.
Three years ago.
So I would feel the same way with that, that we just go with the cost of living increase. Now, when it comes to the mayor, I feel like he is vastly underpaid because if you compare his position to the judge, the judge is making $108,000 a year.
$108,000.
And I think your job is just as much responsibility, if not more, than the judge. So I would, what is the maximum, Andrew? What's the...
The maximum is, it's right around $74,000.
What's current, the mayor's currently being paid?
$69,600.
$69,600.
So I would support the maximum. I would even support more than that if we could, to get the stature of the mayor's position equal with the judge.
There's no way to do that, though, is there?
No, you can. There's no way legally you can.
I would support it if we could.
Right.
So I'm going to support a maximum on the mayor's, and the other two stand the same.
So probably if the two years that I didn't take a salary increase when I was mayor, you add that on to today's amount, you would have been at least at probably $27, $2784, $2,784, probably would have automatically come on to this mayor's salary. Sorry, Mayor. Sorry, screwed you up.
No, I'm silent on this issue. This is not...
Well, I don't think any of us do this for the money. I think we do it because of service, and, you know, I mean, there are other ways we can make a whole lot... And, um, you know, I mean, there are other ways we can make a whole lot more money. But I guess a point that was brought up to me, too, by someone in the community, was how much more the magistrates make for a four-year term. And, you know, by the time they get their training, they're almost at thirty.
Does anybody know historically, just curiosity, why there is such a big difference between what the council has made in the past and the magistrate's? Is there any historical?
Tom, you was on that position.
We've done both.
Uh, wasn't there, here's what I understand. When, when there were, you know, we had a three-commissioner form of government and a county judge. And, uh, that began not to work after a while o- over a set of issues. It was more personality-driven. Uh, there were two magistrates that were determined to vote against the judge and another magistrate. And with a four-member court, you can tie it up. So they had a planning and zoning appointment to make. And the judge must have brought six different people for, to be appointed. And I think those two magistrates wanted to make the appointment themselves. And the judge naturally was not going to allow that to happen. So they kept tying up two to two, and at the fiscal court, a two to two is a no action. So they couldn't get board appointments done. This became so pervasive that the community objected. And the community actually made a decision, go to, to go to seven magistrates, to get us away from that deadlocked situation that we had between two commissioners and the judge and a commissioner. Now, the judges, I've talked to George about this history. The judge's intention at that time was to take the salary of the three commissioners, which was good. County officials, oh, they, they used to be, historically in Kentucky, they were called road commissioners. And they'd have a responsible authority for an area. In Pike County today, magistrates have their own road garage in their district. And they have their own crews. They're given a new four-wheel-drive pickup truck every year. And they make sixty thousand dollars a year. That's the, the, the history of county government moving in that direction. What the judge suggested when we voted, the community voted to make this change, was take the total salary of three commissioners and divide it by seven.
Wow.
And it would have been city council-esque.
Oh.
Those city commissioners said, "Oh, no. We'd like for all seven to get the same salary." Judge tried to avoid that.
That's interesting.
Prior to any of us, first seven magistrates getting elected.
Wow. I never knew the history.
Take that history with always taking the CPI. And then the additional, the training incentives, if you stack all four years. The, the current magistrate salary is about twenty-nine thousand with the training incentive. If they take the deduction that the judge has suggested and has been hotly debated at the fiscal court meeting, the judge suggesting reducing their salary to nineteen-five, but maintaining the cost of living adjustment going forward. And maintaining their training incentive.
And retirement first, where they can sign up for retirement, too, can't they?
They can.
Yeah.
They can. They have to sign a document that says they work a hundred hours a month, but they can. Even if they approve this new proposal across the street with the training incentive, even with the reduction, those salaries will be double the city council's. And, uh, this is just purely a, uh, an observation on my part. Since I've had the good fortune of sitting as a council member for nine years and a magistrate for sixteen years, I can tell you that you work harder. I'm not disparaging any of my fellow magistrates at all. But I've done both, and council works pretty hard. So I'll leave, uh, this really is a council decision. I just wanted you to have those options. And that, that was the history, Karen.
I never knew where the salary came from. I remember the, the government set up differently, but thank you.
Well, that is interesting. Well, I still would like to move forward. I, I don't wanna leave it in just dangling there. I don't mind getting some more information. Um, you know, it, I know that nobody's being blindsided by it by no means, because we've talked about it, discussed it, and that kinda thing. It basically comes down to being a number. And I don't think it's unfair to, to think that it would be okay for us to be raised to fourteen thousand council for that, you know, and still be low. Definitely lower than our counterparts across the street. And, and I'm like, Polly, I, I do this because I love it. I'm, I'm very grateful to, to be a servant to my community. But, um, we do work hard. And not whoever, you know, whoever's the next council, they're gonna work hard. And we're not gonna, by no means, be a smaller community.
No.
You know, being, being a council member, you see so much things in this community that you want to fix. And, and you just know that we, we just physically can't get everything done that we want to do. But, but as a group, we try very hard to do the best that we can do.
I think based on the twenty-five hundred dollars and what we would max, maxing the mayor out and the twenty-five hundred for the clerk, I think based on our budget is what we should make it accountable to and find out what's that gonna increase our budget by doing that.
It's not a whole lot, really.
It's not.
It's really not. It's a very small percentage.
It is.
Thirty-five.
Very, very small.
So.
Again, since first reading does not require a, a vote of the council, no one has to really state their opinion tonight. Several, several have been kind enough to do that. But if, and I want to simply run this meeting correctly and honor the sponsor's request. Connie and David had, had asked to sponsor it, and I, I believe their intention was to have a dialogue with the council on what those numbers should be. And Connie, I think if, if as the sponsor, uh, you wanted to suggest numbers to go into a first reading, you can ask for the follow-up research and the comparisons be delivered. And you and other council members can have time to have dialogue in the next two weeks about how they feel about that vote.
Next week. I would like to do that. And I'll be happy to do some of the research, help out.
Mayor, can, can I say something? I'm, and I apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off, Mayor.
No, I don't.
Um, just listening. And what I'm about to say, I mean no disrespect to anybody in this room, um, so if it comes across that way, that's not my intent. Been here for a few years, been very fortunate to be here for a few years. And I knew from day one what this position paid. And I had a choice. I could, I could continue to run, or I could go across the street and try to run for magistrate, or I could stay at home and, and work my full-time job. You know, each of us are running, run for different reasons, and I'm not here to question anybody's integrity, or I'm not, I promise. That's not my intent. But I guess several concerns, one of which is, do we have city employees that work in this city right now at the present time, in our last budget that we started on July first, the flash of seventeen? That gotta, do we have, we might've had some employees that got this, but did every single employee in the city get a twenty-five hundred dollar a year raise? Do we have employees that got?
I'll answer that for you, Mark, but you know the answer's no.
And, and again, I'm just, we're, we're, we're talking, we're giving, you know, I'm not being critical of anybody in this room, but I, I have a, I, it's just, we talked about this earlier. This is tough.
But as I said, it's a council decision, and, and you can vote your conscience.
And, you know, again, I respect each of you in here. If that's, I, I can't support it. But, so.
So if we do nothing, it stays the same?
That's correct.
So I'm gonna take my shot. I'm gonna make a motion to table the city council salary adjustment ordinance.
Okay, a motion has been made to table the first reading of the city council ordinance. Andrew, you're gonna have to help me with parliamentary procedures, but assuming that order's in motion, I ask for a second.
I think you just set it as a, just did.
Yeah.
By table on it, if, if we have to do something, though, are you not saying we have to do something, though, or?
You really are supposed to do something.
I mean, we never have.
No, you, that's just a thing.
Case law protects us by doing the same salaries.
So, I mean, the way that, yeah. The right, I mean, guess the text of the right way to set it is, or to, to think about it, is you set the salary. And then it annually, you set it by ordinance, and you say it automatically increases by CPI. So whatever you set it at years and years ago is still technically what the salary remains. It just gets increased by that CPI each time, which is a cumulative number. It's, it's like, it's a multiplier. So you're really setting it, if you set it twenty years ago at eight thousand dollars, well, today it's, you're eleven-four or whatever. So I, I guess really what, what the law says is you set it and you, that is the continuing ordinance. But I guess a, a technical reading of the statute says you should set it in that year. May- maybe there's an argument to be had that you really are setting it, but.
Well, there probably is an argument saying that we are kinda setting it because we've done an ordinance to say that we automatically take, when in that, two years ago, four years ago, we did an ordinance to say we'll automatically take the cost of adjustment without coming back to the council every year for that.
Right.
And then it gets set as far as part of the budget, it gets set.
I mean, the, the question is, what's the alternative? And, and the alternative is not, you would get paid nothing. So the alternative is you get paid what you set the salary at in the previous ordinance. I just, I like, I like the cleanness of passing an ordinance each time, but.
But we, if with his table, then we go on as we, as we have been traveling. Then I'll second his table.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to table item A on the agenda. First reading of the city council salary ordinance.
Does it make a differ- does it make a difference, though, with David being gone, 'cause he's one of the sponsors, or is it just whoever's here?
Whoever's present.
Just whoever's here?
I don't, I don't have an issue with the mayor's or Tracy, or really the, the council. I can live with or without it.
Yeah.
But I do wanna make certain the two over here get their raises.
The motion just dealt with-
I know, I know, I know, I know.
City council.
And I'm just, get, voice my opinion. I, I just wanna make certain these two, and I know you're very much in favor of the mayor. I'm, I'm strong in favor of Tracy getting a raise also, so we need to compromise here.
I won't make a motion to table on Tracy's. Or the city clerk, I don't wanna.
Ms. Hoffman.
Well, we're talking about the position.
I know.
The position.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the, uh, motion to table item seven A?
I have a question. If it's tabled, and when, uh, David is back, can we untable it?
Not unless Chuck make the decision.
The people that voted to table it.
Table it, would have to do that.
Uh, no, any of the council can always pick it back up off the table.
But in somebody's, it's somebody that's supposed to make a motion to untable it, that tabled it.
Hmm. That, I'm gonna have to check on that.
We'll do that. Because I'm not sure, but that's what I was thinking.
I think it's during the same session.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that you're right. But if the next session, the body as a whole has the right to pick any issue up that it wishes, because otherwise it's dead forever. So that, that's, I think, I think you've got the right of it there.
But it has to be the person who made it, who made the mark.
If we were in session.
If you're in the same.
Oh, if you're in the same session.
Chuck's the only one right now could bring it off, back onto the floor today.
Tonight.
Right now.
Tonight.
This evening.
But he's gotta get the votes for the table.
Yeah, it still has to pass.
Yeah, it still has to pass.
So are there questions on the motion?
Apparently a few.
I just wanna make sure, by before, before we call the roll, I just wanna make sure we're clear on the motion. The motion is to table, a yes vote is to table the, uh, city council salary ordinance, and a no vote is not to table. Shall we call the roll?
Sure.
The voice vote will work in these situations, but for clarity, I think it might be good.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Comway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Schulter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Yes.
Mrs. Stackit?
Nope.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Uh, motion to table, uh, is successful five to two.
Now, can I make a motion for us to?
Six to one.
Six. Oh, I'll. So it's six to one. Okay, item seven A is tabled until, uh, further action by the council by a vote of six to one. Item B is first reading of a mayor salary ordinance.
Do we need to read it?
Do we, well, do?
We need a number.
You need a number.
Well, what was the number? You had forty-five hundred?
What's the max, what was the max?
So the mayor's current salary is sixty-nine, six-twenty-seven, seventy-two. Now that, understand that that is the number with CPI increases. Okay, so that is what the mayor makes today. That is not what the ordinance would have set it at. The maximum is seventy-four, four-sixty-eight, twenty-seven. That's the constitutional maximum based on the current CPI. The current constitutional maximum was like forty-eight hundred dollars and nineteen forty dollars. So there's a, there's a difference there of, there's a total maximum increase of four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and fifty-five cents, no matter how you slice it.
I'm good with that.
Is that a motion?
Well, that's the number I would like to put in.
Okay.
What is it?
Seventy-four, four-sixty-eight, twenty-seven.
That's dumb.
What is that now?
Yes, that's a motion.
Seventy-four, what?
I'll second that motion, Connie.
Seventy-four, what?
Four-sixty-eight, twenty-seven, I thought he said.
Seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Can you run that twenty-seven off, make it even?
Can't, huh?
Or just, just do a waiver.
You can drop the twenty-seven off.
Drop twenty-seven?
Yeah, we don't want shorting twenty-seven.
That's annualized, right.
That buying a bubble gum.
It's a penny a paper.
And then Mrs. Hoffman, what was her?
Do I?
Uh, I don't, well, now, that's an attorney question. And if you need to read the entire ordinance, it's not much longer than the summary.
No, give me just a moment, though. Okay, sorry. Uh, no, you can read this, you can read the summary with that amount inserted.
With that amount, but there's no blank on the summary. We're gonna make a blank, aren't you?
He's a doodler.
All right. I tell you what.
My one hour over-under is getting seriously in jeopardy.
And when you said that, I was wondering if you utilized the discussion to take place on the, the ordinance.
Yeah, I was deluded there.
What happens when I go on vacation?
Just rub it in.
Yeah, I know, right. All right. You want me to read it since I wrote it? Since, or you wanna try to read my chicken spread?
Go with it. Go with it.
All right. An ordinance establishing the pay rate for the mayor pursuant, summary, pursuant to KRS eighty-three A dot oh-seven oh subsection one establishes the salary for the elected position of mayor at seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Confirms the annual salary adjustment to be applied in accordance with the Department for Local Government's computation. Provides for severability repeal of inconsistent ordinances and effective date upon passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Introduced in public read first time April ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you, that will constitute first reading. And if it's council's wishes, we'll bring it at the next meeting and, and vote on it at that time. Item C would be first reading of city clerk treasurer salary ordinance. And Connie, a sponsor, you got like twenty-five hundred dollars plugged in there for first reading. Gets to do the same thing again.
I have that map here. Okay. One of those read twice things. Make sure I get it right. All right. Pursuant to, uh, sorry. An ordinance establishing the pay rate for the city clerk treasurer, summary, pursuant to KRS eighty-three A dot oh-seven oh subsection one establishes the salary for the elected position of city clerk treasurer at fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Confirms the annual salary adjustment to be applied in accordance with the Department for Local Government's computation. Provides for severability repeal of inconsistent ordinances and an effective date upon passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Introduced in publicly read first time April ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you, that will constitute the first reading of that ordinance. Uh, item eight on your agenda. Oh, yeah. Just Ms. Saunders is here. And she wasn't here at the very first of our meeting for public comment. But she has a little request that she makes around this time of year, something about concerts.
And Horsie Hundred?
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. So, it is time to get started with the concert again. And if you all noticed on your application, I took Karen's advice for this year and went and asked the merchants downtown that are affected from Hamilton to Broadway if they would mind if we closed the streets down at two o'clock so that we could move the concert during Horsie Hundred out onto the street because it's gotten so big that we can't fit them into the square. And we're also asking Parks and Recreation this year to let us use a couple of bleachers. Because one of the things that we found through our survey, they certainly appreciated that we were bringing about a hundred chairs down for the participants, but we needed more seats.
Bleachers be better too, because it'll be...
Yes, much like the Festival of the Horse.
Yeah.
And we can do that for just the first one, and that's the only one, Memorial Weekend on the May twenty-sixth date. The others would, would remain the same with our usual closing the square and then at five o'clock closing Hamilton. And later, um, Hamilton if the police so feel like we need to, is what we've done in the, in the past. When we've gotten bigger, then we could fit into the, the square.
Was the merchants okay with closing the street down?
They were, and actually, we were very excited because they were happy to do that for Memorial Weekend, and they have agreed to stay open till seven PM too.
Okay, great.
Until the concert starts. So, that was really nice because we've been wanting to get our Horsie Hundred participants into the shops, and it's hard when they're riding. So, they've agreed to extend their hours that evening. I also reached out, Sandra is the only one who's open on Saturdays on Memorial Weekend. And I reached out to her to make sure that we wouldn't be a problem for her clients to be able to get to her during that morning. But we will prob, we won't close down until really it wouldn't affect her anyway at the time that we'd be closing. But we were happy that they agreed to it and appreciate Karen bringing that up again, that we needed to consider doing that because of the large volume of people. And of course, if it rains on May twenty-sixth, we will go up to the college like we did last year and do it under the tent. But all the others stay the same, the June thirtieth, the July twenty-first, the August eighteenth. And I did not put the chili cook-off on that one because I'll do that separate with the Festival of the Horse. So, it's really for the May twenty-sixth through the August eighteenth date. With the one change for Memorial Weekend.
Yeah, and I'm glad you got the merchants to stay open until that concert starts because that Horsie Hundred crowd has disposable income.
Yes, you do.
And they, and they love to spend it when they go places.
Because we have such unique stores, and they always tell me they find things here that they'll never find anywhere else.
A lot of Kentucky-themed products that they wouldn't find, and local artisans that they wouldn't normally see, so we're excited about that too.
And helps bottom line too.
Make the motion approve.
I'll second.
We got seconds there.
The second one was just for Horsie Hundred. You all should have that application too.
Well, first, let's approve the concert series. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lori.
She's gone.
She is gone.
Did he say the Horsie Hundred, please?
Does it need a separate application, or is it part of the other one?
It's really what she's shutting down is the, the... Yeah, that music thing on the twenty-sixth.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Horsie.
It's all approved, thank you, Lori.
We don't need you, honey, just go home.
We were actually voting on permission for you to leave. All in favor, say aye.
We don't want you to go.
That's a good one.
Oh, goodness. Item, uh, I'm so delighted now, when I get to, to the city engineer portion of the agenda, I can look to my left, and there's a gentleman over there named Eddie Hatow. Guys, I'm just delighted to have Eddie on board. He, he's been working hard to pick up all the, all the loose ends and, and kind of make sense out of them. He was not given the luxury of any overlap with the previous engineer. So, he's had to do this kind of out of whole cloth from picking up notes and, and other things. But the lines of communication are good, and I'm convinced that we're gonna do good work. But we had two things under the city engineer tonight. One was, the traffic committee had brought a recommendation at the last meeting to make Cooper Alley one-way. Eddie has reached out to the adjacent property owners. Louis Wolfe came into scene today. I think you've talked to Tim Hanks as well. Eddie and I need to spend some more time with this before we're ready to bring you that hard recommendation, and the, the owners may want to come as well. So, we're gonna not ask you for action on that tonight. Just, we'll keep it on the agenda and bring it back to you next time. We do have one of the council's most popular things to do next, and that is a municipal order approving a change order for Lemons Mill Road widening project. This exceeds my limit to approve.
Didn't you tell him he couldn't go over that limit?
Well, that's why we're here tonight, as a matter of fact. And, and I'll let Eddie explain both the nature of this change order and a change order to follow that will reimburse us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is part of the Lemons Mill Road widening project change order. The Advent factory on Lemons Mill Road at eight twenty-four Lemons Mill Road, the entranceway needs to be widened to get in off of Lemons Mill Road. And in order to, to make that widening, they have to widen the, the surface of the road and the culverts underneath the road and improve, improve that entranceway. The change order's for fifteen thousand, ninety-six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
That was something that, it must have been an error in design.
Yes, sir, it was, the radius of the road should have been wider initially. And they started to notice that the trucks coming in were hitting, were cutting a corner and hitting the headwalls of the entranceway, the culverts. And so, in order to fix that and make it right, it needs to be, it needs to be readdressed and, and moved and widened so those trucks can get in and out of there to make that turn, so...
Before we vote on that change order, Eddie, if you could go ahead and explain that, that other change order that we anticipate?
Yes. At the, the net, the final change order will be a deduction in the contract amount of approximately eighteen thousand dollars. Those were quantities that, those were items that didn't get used in the, in the original bid. It's a unit price contract where they spell out pipe and pavement, stone, all the different items that go into a road project. And to balance those quantities out, it's gonna be a deduction of about eighteen thousand dollars off CD.
So, we're about three thousand ahead on this one then?
But this is a change order of fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion for that change order, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Let's see, the, the other point that I wanted... Completely lost my train of thought, Eddie. Well, we've gotten a, a motion and approval to approve the change order. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Also wanted to remind the council that this project came in substantially below what it was projected to cost. This is the project that originally had a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate, and it came in well under that. And even despite the change orders that we've approved previously, the amount that we committed to the project when we began will not increase by that.
When will Blacktop Mass start opening up? Soon?
Soon.
It's gonna be great to see that, that road completed.
It's your will. And in fact, our contribution to that road is the final surface in AP funds, and that'll actually be used from the bridge.
The bridge all the way?
All the way to the back pass. So, we should have a really smooth surface once we start that. Also want you to know that Eddie and I have had some good conversations about street paving, and we are of a similar philosophy about street paving. We like to pave streets when we have money to pave streets. And he's been going through some of the research that Kyle had done. He's brought me a list that we're gonna start reviewing. We should have substantial funds available to us to pave streets this spring and summer. And I think we're committed for you all to see a lot of that happen. Any other questions, Freddie? Thank you, sir. Under Public Works, oh, well, Robert did make it, good. We have a municipal order approving a contract for a garbage truck repair. Typically, we don't bring repair jobs to you. This truck went into the shop with a repair estimate of seven or eight thousand dollars for the repair. They found more work that needed to be done, and it ended up over ten thousand dollars.
It's an old truck?
Now, we're here with Robert.
It's a two thousand thirteen automated, the first automated we had.
This is the arm?
No, it's the intercooler on transmission.
Okay, well, no, you went too far.
Yeah, well.
When you said transmission, she was lost.
It's not cheap, they kept finding stuff, I mean, so, I mean, we just need to get y'all to approve it. We got, we gotta fix it, if you don't, it's a big paperweight.
You're down with the truck.
Aren't you talking about new trucks are two hundred...
Yeah.
Sixty thousand dollars or something?
And this, this truck, we use it right now as a spare. It's our backup truck if one of those is down or in the shop. But this truck was the very first automated, and it, it's kind of been through the wringer, it's been treated rough, so... I think it's been on fire twice.
Not a fire truck, is it?
That's terrible.
But it's, uh...
You gotta take a...
I mean, it's been a good truck.
Fire extinguisher with you.
But, you know, it is, it is nice to have when one goes down, and they do go down.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve fixing Robert's garbage truck.
Resurrected.
Y'all got fire sprayers on that?
Extinguisher. That's good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Robert, very much. Let's see, that gets us down to an executive session and council comments. Our executive session, we anticipate, will be very brief.
Okay.
Brief is good.
And brief is good. And...
Hi, Robert.
Dan, I doubt we'll take action when we come out, but we will. We will take action when we come out, I stand corrected. And we're, and we're going in for...
I move to enter into executive session pursuant to KRS six one point eight one oh one C to discuss matters of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the city.
Second.
You've won. You've won, nice job, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?